Has everyone signed up? Excuse me. Whoa, we got a live mic. Just to let everyone know, we do have a sign up sheet up here at the front door. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, please sign up. There's also agendas at the front. We are actually going to open the meeting upstairs at seven because that's where it was advertised before we realized there would be a crowd. And then we're going to recess the meeting down here at 7:05. So look for the board to come in around 7:05. And again, if you need to sign up, please do so before the meeting begins. Thank you.
Thank you for attending tonight. We are going to have to do a little work up here first for swearing in of the board members that Lori will do. And then we'll introduce our new county attorney as well. So Lori, how about you doing that first?
Yes, so. Board members at your seat, you should have a copy of the oath. So those changes that we made earlier this year under North Carolina General Statutes 160D, it now requires that all of our planning committees be sworn in and take an oath of office. In the interest of social spacing, you can do it from your seat. And what I want you to do is I'm just going to read it and if you can repeat after me what I say and insert your name, obviously where there is a blank. If you'll just raise your right hand and read the oath with me. Then when we're done, I will have you sign it and then I will notarize them later. Okay, so you will say aye and state your name. Do solemnly swear. Thank you. If I could get you to go ahead and print your name on the two blanks and then sign it at the bottom and then I will be collecting them. And then I'm going to pass around a book. If you could just sign where it says signature next to your name, I already have all of your names in here.
Okay, thank you. Is that it Lori?
Um, yes.
Okay, members of the public, thank you again for coming. I'd like to introduce to you because she is fairly new to the county. Ellis, what's your last name? I just know Ellis. Ellis is new for the county and he is our county attorney. And so I hope that you'll welcome him as we move forward tonight. Ellis, if you would make a statement, I appreciate it.
This chairman, thank you for that and welcome everyone. One of the things lawyers often do is communicate with others what the rules are and what they allow and require. So let me do that. There are a lot of people in this room close together. There is a. We've returned to the requirement for gatherings in this building that attendees wear a mask. So please be mindful of that. And if you do not have one on you presently, go to your car, please, or please do what you need to do to get one and wear it as required. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen, so much. Okay. If, if we would go ahead, Sarah, do you have a sign up sheet or do we need one? Are you going to get it? Do you have it?
Um, no, Sarah is getting it. But before you get to the first agenda item, I'd like to do just a little bit of homework and a little bit of background information for the board.
Well, before you go there, let's make sure everybody has signed that.
Gotcha.
We have a sign up sheet. If you are going to speak, we would love for you to sign the, the register here so that we can identify you as you come up. And when you do come up to the podium, give you your name and address for the public record. So has everyone signed the notebook here that wants to speak? Okay, very good. Okay, Lori, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and this is for the public as well. The one item on your agenda tonight is a conditional district rezoning. So section 154 of the planning ordinance states that conditional zoning districts provide for those situations where particular use, properly planned may be appropriate for a particular site, but where the general district has insufficient standards to mitigate the site specific impact on surrounding areas. Uses may be considered for a conditional zoning district are restricted to those uses permitted. And that's both by right and special use in the corresponding general zoning district. So that's a lot of fancy planning terminology. So I just kind of wanted to break it down into layman's terms for y'all because this is your first conditional zoning case. This came about because of chapter 160D. We added it to the ordinance in the spring. So a conditional district rezoning is a legislative process. And I think you're used to having special use permit processes which are quasi judicial. So in a legislative process, there's no sworn testimony. There's no forefindings of fact. You're reviewing the proposal in front of you to determine if it is consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. And then when you go to make a motion, you will include a statement of reasonableness and consistency as to whether you think it is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. You have had rezoning requests. I think most recently you had two general rezoning requests. And so this is essentially a rezoning with a very site specific development plan. So the only thing, if this item is approved by the Board of Commissioners, the only thing that can then be done on that property is what is on that site plan in front of you. No other uses would be allowed unless they came back to the board and amended their approval. And if you have any questions about this process, I'll be happy to answer them during the process. We also have our attorney here that who the chairman introduced. I'm very excited to be working with Ellis. I have to brag because his undergraduate degree is in land use planning. So we love planners. So he has the knowledge that y'all are looking for. So we're here to assist the board tonight with any questions. And that's really all the homework that I kind of wanted to get up here and speak before the meeting began.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me just say to the board and to the public as well, because I want to be clear. In our packet that we received, it actually tells us or prints out to us and it is on page four of rezoning narrative. And it actually tells us what the county, Person County land use plan is and what, how we are to look at it tonight. And if you want to just, I don't, I'll read it out loud or you, what do, would you?
I definitely want you to read that, but while you're talking about the binder, I also wanted to point out what was included in the email. I believe some of the public may have also looked at that binder. So there was some incorrect information in your binder. You had two tabs that were labeled special use permit. There was some confusion. The applicant thought that they were applying for a conditional district rezoning plus a special use permit. So I just wanted to point out to the board again and to the public that this is solely a conditional district rezoning request.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Yes, may I ask a question before you go any further? It can be hard to hear in this room, I know, particularly when that ventilation system is running. May I ask for a, for head nods or no? Can, can you all hear what is being said generally? I see some no's. Okay, volume is off as high as it goes. So maybe a, an infrequent exception to that rule when you're speaking, it's, it's kind of like bind it, take off mask.
Okay. Also, since we're right there on that subject, please keep your comments to a minimum of three to five minutes, please. That would be most appreciative as we go through this process. Now, if you will, now I want you to, these are basically the guidelines for the compatible Person County land use plan. That is the comprehensive part. Promote orderly, efficient land use that allows for diverse uses that are sensitive to environmental concerns. Object 1.3 minimize conflicts between adjoining uses. Goal 2.0 support economic growth. Goal 3.0 minimize disruption to the free flow of traffic. Goal four, maintain rural character and identity. Goal five, provide efficient public services, including electrical utilities. And goal seven, protect water quality. Now that's our plan use for, that was adopted in 2001. So, and then on in the booklet, I'm not going to drag this out. We do have in, on tab, a statement of compliance. We have the land use plan of 2001. It actually defines a lot of the comments that I just read on page eight. I will not bore you with that, but please kind of scan that as you go forward. And if anyone has a question about land use, we'll, we'll talk that through as well. So with that said, Lori, if you're ready to present. Oh, Angie, I'm sorry. Angie, would you mind doing that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have. Okay, this is a conditional district rezoning. And I would like to say at this point that all the state statutes and planning ordinance requirements requiring notice have been met for this public meeting. Okay, conditional district rezoning. An explanation of the request. This is a petition CD 0121. It is a request by Plateau Solar LLC on behalf of the property owners, Thomas and Rachel Puckett, W. Ruffin Woody Jr. and Samuel Kates. And again, it's for a conditional district rezoning from our residential RC Rural Conservation and B1 Highway Commercial to CDRC, Conditional District Rural Conservation, for a level three, 10 acres or greater solar energy system known on tax map and parcel numbers as A411, A3116, A3142, and A425. This is approximately 798 acres located on Hurdle Mills Road and Satterfield Road. As Lori explained earlier, a conditional district rezoning is new to Person County since the adoption of 160D. It differs from a rezoning in that a site plan for the use of the property is presented at the same time as the rezoning. The board will be approving the rezoning as well as the proposed use and will approve or disapprove a statement as to whether or not the proposed CD rezoning meets the future land uses in the land use plan for Person County. The Person County Land Use Plan was adopted in 2001 and it did not include solar energy systems at that time. So that's important to keep in mind. This is an aerial map of the property. The properties to the north, east, to the west, and to the south of the proposed project are a mixture of woodlands, pasture, or farmland, and they have few single family dwellings. This is a zoning map of the property. The yellow represents our or residential. The green represents RC and the reddish color is the B1. The four tracks involved are currently zoned R, RC, and B1 Highway. This is a copy of the future land use map. It's a funny color. It's kind of a pinkish, it's supposed to be red. That's actually rural residential is what it represents. And well, I'm sorry, that's backwards. Suburban residential is in the pink and rural residential is in the tan. These allow for subdivisions, manufactured home parks, commercial, office, industrial, and public institutional uses. The request, the proposed development would consist of approximately 205,000 monocrystalline solar panels, not to exceed the height of 15 feet. The generating capacity is to be 65 megawatts. 150-foot vegetative buffer existed or planted is required along all exterior property lines, with the exception of those participating parcels sharing property lines, which would be exempt from buffering requirements as long as each property owner signs and submits a waiver per Article 2 of the Person County Solar Energy Ordinance. These waivers have been submitted and they are on file. These waivers have been submitted and they are on file. There is at least one blue line stream on each parcel. A 50-foot buffer each side has been shown on the site plan. A 300-foot setback from the nearest solar panel to the nearest dwelling is required and has been delineated on the site plan. Solar energy systems that are proposed within five miles of an airport operation must submit documentation from Article 1, Section 2.5, II through IVA of the Person County Solar Energy Ordinance, which are map analysis results, determination of whether the airport is in the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, documentation, certification that the project will not interfere with airport, aircraft communication systems, and proof that intent to construct a solar energy system was sent to the NC Commanders Council at least 30 days prior to the hearing. These items have been submitted and are also on file. All right, this is a map, the site plan of the property. The yellow indicates a buffer that must be planted. The green around the perimeter, those are 150-foot buffers that already exist. These are already trees, 150 feet of trees. There's also, in this area, a point of interconnectivity. That's where they're gonna upload to the grid. I believe it's in this area. Also, we have access points where they plan to access each site. One thing that we didn't ask for, it's not actually in the ordinance, is wildlife corridors. And on this site plan, these black marks here, those are 50-foot-wide wildlife corridors. Again, it's not something that's required in the ordinance, but on their site plan, they have included that. Okay, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed conditional district rezoning, Level 3 solar energy system based on the Person County Land Use Plan and the future land use map contained within the land use plan. Staff has determined that all regulations and standards as set forth in the Person County Solar Energy System Ordinance have been applied to the site plan. They have been met or exceeded the regulations and standards. The zoning is a conditional district rezoning request, and conditions can be placed on the approval, and site plans can be approved with the request. Reasonableness, reasonableness and consistency statement. The request is consistent with the Person County Land Use Plan and future planning goals of the county, that it's reasonable and that it is in the public interest as it meets the goals of the Person County Land Development Plan specifically. 1.0, that it promotes an orderly and efficient land use development pattern, which allows for a variety of land uses while being sensitive to environmental concerns. The planning board has to approve or disapprove the reasonableness and consistency statement. Also, I've laid at your, each person's seat. The chair had asked for some tax information, and that's what you're looking at there. That's my presentation. Do you have any questions or?
Board members, do you have, do you have any questions of Angie or members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start on the list here. Norman Boyette is first on the agenda tonight. Please, okay, I apologize. You come right on. You're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Tom Carroll with the law firm Fox Rothschild. I'm attorney here tonight for Plateau Solar for... I've bent down a little bit. I'm attorney for Plateau Solar for Pine Gate Renewables and also to speak for the interest of the property owners that were shown on your screen. The Woody family, the Kates family, and the Puckett family. Following me, and we'll all try to be very concise. I have about five different people who will be speaking to you. I do appreciate, though, what you were saying about the land use plan, because it tells me that the Board has looked at the large and extensive notebook that we did provide you in advance. In a broad picture, 99% of all rezonings are what are called upzonings. It's a colloquial term. It means you're changing land use to something that's more intense, more traffic, more noise, or something like this. This is not an upzoning. It is a rare downzoning. A downzoning is when you have fewer intense uses, fewer uses that are allowed. And it's a downzoning where it would be enforceable by the condition that we have placed on here, that it will be a solar farm. And you will see, before this evening is over, you won't be able to see it or hear it, and it does not generate any traffic. Now, much of Person County is in what is called a rural conservation district. When you hear that term, you will think that most of the county is zoned for just agriculture and what would be in a rural conservation district. But in some odd irony, that was the term chosen many years ago for your highway commercial uses and your industrial uses. So I think we need to keep that in context. Part of this tract of land is in a residential district by right. The landowners could come in there and build houses and a subdivision without having to come and get it reset. If they wanted to do something by special use, they could put in a convenience store. They could put in apartments, campgrounds, utility substations on this tract of land in the part that's residential district. Part of it is in what is called B1 Highway Commercial. By right, they can put in an auto dealership, an airstrip, a car wash, tractor supply, Dollar General, motels, kennels. These are the uses that they don't have to come in and get any permission from anybody. These are uses that are intense. They don't have, not a one of them, has a requirement for a 150-foot vegetative buffer. And again, this downzoning, unlike all the things you can do by right, creates a use that has no traffic generation other than a handful of vehicles or less per month. You can't see it and you won't be able to hear it. And I encourage you, if you have not seen this site, I contrast that with the 110-foot transmission towers that already crossed this land and that anybody who drives through the Hurdle Mills community and if anybody who adjoins these properties sees those transmission towers and lines. What land use and zoning is about at its core, it's not about philosophy, it's not about political theories. It's about whether or not the proposed use has an impact, an unreasonable impact on an adjoining property. That's what land use is about. And if it does have some impact, can you mitigate it in some reasonable way? There's another theory on land use in North Carolina. It has been adopted by our state Supreme Court, that there is such thing as property rights. We acknowledge those in North Carolina, that the person who pays taxes on their land, and it's their land, should have the ability to do some reasonable use on the land that they pay taxes on. On July 14, there was a hearing on a separate solar farm, not this one. But almost all the speakers came from this community for that solar farm. And there were many things that were said, and in anticipation of that, I'd like to address them in advance. There are only about five points, and I'll be brief. We heard that there would be a loss of farmland. Well, this tract is 2/10ths of 1% of the landmass of the county, but that has nothing to do with whether or not the use has an effect on the adjoining property owner. That's a policy issue that has nothing to do with that. We heard that these panels would be made in China. Actually, they're not. They'll be assembled and made in Canada. The irony of that is that these claims about something from China typically are made by people who use an iPhone. They use a Samsung phone. They're all made in China. They drive Ford vehicles, which cannot operate without computer chips from China. So if you drive a Ford, or you use an iPhone, or you use a Lenovo laptop, it's very unfair to say to someone who wants to do solar, "Oh, but you might have a part from China." I want to call that out, but the most important thing is, it's not a land use issue. It's not an issue addressed in your land use plan. We heard that somehow the people in the county were going to be forced, that was the word used, forced, to buy this electricity. Well, truth is, if you purchase your energy from Duke Energy today, you're getting your power in part from solar. You have been for many, many years. But again, this is a decision that the world and the marketplace of energy handles. It's not a land use issue. It's not an issue that is addressed in your comprehensive plan. We heard that there will be millions of dollars of subsidy for solar panels. It's flat, not true. There is not a single dollar, not one cent, that is paid to this company or anybody to construct this solar farm. Now, what will happen is they will pay higher land taxes. It will be shifted from agriculture to a commercial rate, and they pay 100% of that rate. What they don't do is pay 100% on the property tax on those panels. But I will add here parenthetically, people can have an issue with that, but the person who cannot have an issue with it is somebody who has land themselves in agricultural or timber deferment, because they're getting that same type of tax abatement, but it's for the land itself, not property tax, not personal property here. It is for, in this case, a reduction in what they pay for the property tax, 100% payment for an increased value on the land. And finally, we heard that there was a concern that Duke Energy had decided to close its coal plants. That has nothing to do with solar. Solar is not pushing out coal. It is not economically feasible to get coal and make energy from coal. That's Duke decision. It has nothing to do with land use, with zoning, and it's not a principle applied here from your comprehensive plan. And let me close on this, members of the Board. There were three things that we did not hear. We did not hear anybody come forward and say that they respected the rights of the taxpayers who bought this property and who paid taxes on this property to use the land that they own in a reasonable and responsible way. Nobody acknowledged that. The second thing we did not hear. We had many people who came in, and they were quick to point their finger at these landowners and say, "I tell you how you should use your land, in my opinion. I don't own your land. I don't pay taxes on your land, and I don't live adjacent to your land, but I'm gonna tell you how you can use your land." Not one of those people voluntarily said, "And I will myself allow my neighbor to tell me how to use my land." We never heard that. And then the third thing, and this is really the most important, we did not hear a credible claim based in existing facts that there was anything related to this proposed solar farm that would have a measurable, visual, or audible impact on somebody who's right, who lives next door. That was not it. We heard some fears expressed, but nothing that was based in the facts. Following me, I would like to introduce you to the site. Mr. Corey Howell and Nick Kuhn. Mr. Kuhn is a registered landscape architect. Following them will be Chris Sanford and Tommy Cleveland. They come out of the industry. Mr. Sanford used to work for Duke Energy himself. Tommy Cleveland was among the team that developed solar energy at North Carolina State University. And they will be followed by Mr. Richard Kirkland, who has been described many times. I don't know how many, but he is routinely described as one of the foremost, if not the world's leading experts in the impact of solar on adjoining properties. So I'd like to introduce at this time, Mr. Howell.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Corey Howell. I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state of North Carolina. I'm a civil engineer and project manager with Kimley Horn at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Wanted to, personally, my experience, I've been involved in the design and permitting of well over 100 solar farms throughout North Carolina and across the southeast from a site civil engineering standpoint. So I just want to take a few minutes to review some of the information, and really, it's all contained in the packet that you received. We just want to hit on some of the highlights and touch on some of the points there related to the site development aspects. Overall, this project is approximately 798 acres. It is located along Hurdle Mills Road, Rogers Whitfield Road, and Satterfield Road. As was stated in the presentation at the beginning, the setbacks for this, you know, all of the development on this site will be at a minimum of 300 feet setback from any residential structures. There is 150 feet or more of landscape buffer that is, will be talked about by one of my partners here, Mr. Nick Kuhn, a landscape architect. In a few minutes, he'll review some visuals. And as well as the streams on the site, we'll have a 50-foot riparian buffer in accordance with the code. In relation to streams and wetlands, those are shown on the site plan. And impacts to those will be minimal at best and really minimized and only needed for areas where there are crossings or access or utility roads to cross those. That will be the most impact. It was touched on at the beginning, but there will be wildlife corridors maintained through the site in three different locations, running approximately east-west across the property. Access points are identified on the site plan, both off of Hurdle Mills Road and Rogers Whitfield Road. From a site design standpoint, solar farms are one of the least intensive when it comes to impervious standpoint, you know, really, in a water quality standpoint. The amount of impervious area on a solar farm is really in the 3% to 5% of this entire site, which is incredibly low for any kind of development and will have, you know, no negative impact on water quality. As far as traffic, that was also mentioned. Incredibly minimal, low-intensive use. There will not be any permanent employees on the site once it is constructed. And, you know, the trips to the site will range from potentially 3 to 5 a week at most likely, just for routine maintenance of the facility, which will not have any negative impact on the surrounding roadway network. And overall, it is, you know, my professional opinion that the project is in harmony with the surrounding area and will not negatively impact the health, safety, or welfare of the public as it will meet or exceed the land development ordinance requirements and the solar ordinance for Person County, as well as North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Code. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Howell at this time? Hey, thank you, Mr. Howell. Appreciate that. I may have you back up, so.
Good evening. My name is Nick Kuhn. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of North Carolina, and I represent Kimley Horn, located at 421 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'd like to highlight a few of the items in regards to the vegetation, vegetated buffer located around the project. One of the highlights here, and this is regarding information that's included in the binders in front of you this evening. Some of the points here is, we've got some display boards over here that represent some visuals here. Over 83% of the buffer in this project is actually going to be existing vegetation. The other 17% approximately will represent proposed landscape buffer, all in accordance to the Person County Solar Energy Ordinance, meeting or exceeding that ordinance at 150-foot width. Some of that 17% of proposed landscape also includes supplemental to existing buffers. So in some areas, we do have buffers that may not be up to... So in some areas, we do have, um, buffers that may not be up to 150 feet in width. So it'd be supplemental landscape to enhance that. Um, all this really represents over, uh, investment of over $1.4 million in additional proposed landscape, uh, for this project. The intent of the landscape buffer that is proposed is also to have a mixture of 50% evergreen and 50%, deciduous vegetation. This will help ensure that there's year-round screening from the vegetation. So year-round impacts would be covered by this, uh, landscape. In addition, the proposed species of vegetation, um, have been identified attentively, but would be determined at the time of construction. The proposed, uh, species would be in adherence to the Person County Solar Energy Ordinance, and would meet and exceed those, uh, potential performance guidelines of, uh, meeting over a 30% or 30-foot height, uh, to the vegetation, uh, within a 10-year timeframe. Um, in addition, the landscape would be consistent with the rural character along the corridors, uh, that 17% of, of buffer proposes, um, as you can identify on some of the site plans, uh, shaded in the yellow, are primarily located along roadway right-of-ways. And so this would actually enhance those corridors with additional vegetation. Um, it's my opinion as a registered landscape architect that the buffer proposed, uh, in addition with the existing vegetative buffer would, uh, uh, screen any potential views of the solar panels at 15% or 15-foot height. In addition, it would potentially enhance some of the views that are currently there that, um, in the corridors that actually represents some of the, um, transmission towers and other utilities, uh, in there. So we'd actually be screening some of those views. Some of the boards that, uh, are in your packet illustrate some of those proposed conditions at locations of those, uh, three proposed locations for, uh, the after visuals, as well as some of the, uh, existing conditions along those proposals with some of those, um, transmission lines as well within those views. So we, you screen that, and there's actually some, uh, boards that show, uh, the previous ordinance versus, uh, the new ordinance and what the additional 150-foot versus the prior 50-foot enhancement would do in terms of providing additional screening to the project. Thank you.
Tough as well. Um, yes, hold on, hold on, Sid. Yes.
I have a question for you. Did I hear you say that the, um, the vegetative areas that you were going to have to plant, they would reach the requirement, the, the ordinance requirement of 30 feet high? So it would take 10 years for that to happen, though?
Yes, the, the Person County Solar Energy Ordinance has a performance requirement, uh, that vegetation would reach a 30-foot height, uh, within a 10-year timeframe. So the proposed landscape would be, uh, targeted to meet or exceed that performance requirement.
Tell them what they would get called tall enough to still pass.
Uh, yes, the, since the, the panels are approximately 15 feet maximum height, uh, the, the actual panels would be screened within about a six-to-seven year timeframe in that, upon initial, from initial planting.
Even though the ordinance allows it, um, it would still take at least seven years, presumably, that it would mean possibly seven years that you could still see the solar panels.
Uh, potential, there'd be a partial screening, that would be to exceed, uh, the height of the maximum panels. Great.
Okay, thank you, Sid.
Good evening, Board. My name's Tommy Cleveland. I'm a professional engineer, uh, in North Carolina, uh, that work in solar, and I've worked in solar my whole career, about 15 years now. And I'm going to talk to you about potential health or safety impacts of the, the project, as well as potential agricultural impacts of the, the project. These are both topics that I've looked at very closely. I spent 12 years at NC State at a group now called North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. Uh, and a lot of that time, I was the lead solar engineer there. And that was a time before solar was being installed at any kind of large scale in the state. And as that started, questions from communities around the state came into the university and, and came to our center, and eventually came to me, uh, questions like, what is this going to do to my community? Will it endanger my health or safety? And I, I was teaching classes on solar at the time. I, I knew some answers and others I didn't know yet, and I went and, and researched and, and found, researched by, uh, institutions and universities from around the, the country and the world. So that's what I'm speaking from, that, that experience. For the last four years, I've worked for a consulting company, uh, who Duke has hired to inspect, uh, a lot of the solar projects connecting to Duke Energy across North Carolina and South Carolina. So in that role, I've been out and personally been responsible for inspecting on behalf of Duke about 75 projects in the last four years. So I'm very familiar with the sites and the technology and what this, you know, how they're built, how they operate. So while I was at NC State, I was the, the lead author on two papers on these topics, uh, that I believe have been in your, your notebook, one on health and safety and one on balancing agricultural and solar, uh, in both of those. I researched studies by others, and also talked to experts from around the university, uh, and around the country. I'll talk first about health and safety impacts. Now, the technology being implemented here is, is not new. It's a silicon-based solar panels that's been, you know, out in the field for well over 40 years and studied by academics for, for at least that long. So it's well understood how they work, what happens when they're out in the environment for 40 years, and also what happens when you need to dispose of them at the end of their life. I think it's very important to realize that when they're out there working, they're offsetting emissions from fossil fuel plants. Because this electricity's on the grid, less coal and less natural gas are being burned, and that has very clear positive health impacts to the public. Uh, the EPA has done research into that, to look, well, what if you put solar in the Carolinas, considering what that does to the grid, how much health and safety benefits or public health benefits does that have? And their estimates are that for a project of this size, a 65-megawatt project over 30 years, it would, it would result in at least $50 million of public health benefits just from those reduced emissions, because this is clean electricity. It, it cleans up the, the air and the water, because there's less pollution coming out from other plants. So significant public health benefit. But most of the concerns are, are just that, concerns about, well, what may the negative impacts be? And I'll, I'll talk about those briefly here. Fire is one potential concern. There's very little in the, the panels to burn, and I'll, you know, they're almost all glass and aluminum. There's some thin layers of plastic, and that's all that can burn. But there's no significant fire risk. The system has to be built to National Electrical Code. It has to use appropriate UL-listed materials, and, and fire is just not a concern from even a large project. Uh, glare may also be a concern. Only in rare cases can the panels produce much glare. If sun hits it at a really glancing angle, but when you have a tracking system, it's always facing the sun, so it's never has a glancing angle. And these can go right on airports. The concern is potentially the impact to aircraft, but as an example, there's a 20-megawatt, uh, solar farm right at the Indianapolis Airport, and right at the end of the runway. It's been there for quite a few years. That's not causing any trouble. EMF, or maybe called radiation electromagnetic fields, are generated anytime you've got electricity. So solar's not unique in that sense. Uh, EMF comes in many different frequencies. Our cell phones and Wi-Fi and radio waves are all much higher frequency, much higher energy than the kinds of EMF that comes off of wires with electricity in them. And there's some EMF generated by parts of the projects, uh, but those parts are internal to the, to the fenced area, uh, and such that no increased EMF will be experienced by anybody outside the project. So there's no reason for any concern from, from EMF. And then the largest concern usually is toxicity and what's in the panels, what might, you know, impact this from a health, health point of view. Most of the panel by weight is a tempered glass front and an aluminum frame. And then you've got silicon cells, and silicon is second most common element in the earth's crust, uh, very benign. There's no, uh, health problems with the silicon. There's plastic layers that are common plastics with no health concerns. Uh, there's aluminum and copper and tin, and then the only component in there with any health concern is lead. There's tiny amounts of lead in the solder between the various electrical connections, but it's, uh, just a few grams per panel. That's really hard to get out of the, the panels. The, it's got this strong tempered glass front and these layers of plastics that are encapsulants that keep moisture from ever getting inside. And so there's almost no way for that lead to get out. Even when the panels break, those plastic layers keep all the glass together like a car windshield. So even broken panels, you can pick up the whole panel. And there's just many studies done on this, and there's not a health or safety concern from, from leaching of lead. Lead naturally exists in the soil, and there's already a, a lot of lead in, in that field, because there's, there's lead in all soil, just, just naturally. So no, no help, no health concern there. Moving to agricultural impacts, there's nothing about the project that would, you know, keep this site from being farmed in the future or negatively impact agricultural rounds. And I worked with a number of agricultural experts at NC State that'd be able to say that, when we looked into this question, uh, and wrote that, that paper, the public information paper. And that's a, a paper that was published by NC State and North Carolina Cooperative Extension, and that is the, the research body of the university to, to give out information to farmers, and that is the cooperative extensions position on it as well. And so just, yeah, inclusion there, there's, there's nothing about this project that would harm agricultural use now or in the future on this site or, or neighboring sites. And I know I've covered a lot quick, I could answer more questions, but in, in summary, it's my professional opinion that this project as developed would have no negative health or safety impacts and, and not have any negative agricultural impacts either.
Thank you, Tommy. Any questions of him, to board members? I'll have you back up. I've got one or two concerns, so we'll, we'll come back to.
Yes, sir.
All right. Who else? You have speak-ups, or?
Can you hear me now? Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, my name is Chris Sandifer. My office is at 3118 Green Road, Spring Hope, North Carolina. Chris. S-A-N-D-I-F-E-R. Uh, that, I am also a licensed electrical professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and also electrical contractor. I have stalled many of the interconnections for solar farms, which Tommy's group has had to approve from me to get connected to Duke. I also worked for Duke for 30 years. The last five years I worked with Duke, that was my job, was to interconnect, uh, solar farms. So I did that as well. So I'm a licensed electrical contractor with unlimited classification, so it allows me to do that. I'm also a landowner, a farmer, and I have 100 acres of, of my family farmland is under panels now. And, uh, it's, uh, I'm, I'm saying this so that you would give me some, you know, uh, platform that you wouldn't believe what I'm going to say, is that I don't think there's, there's any danger in this, this project, the way it's being put in. I don't know if there's anyone that's going to say it is, but without hesitation or equivocation, I would say it will not immaterially endanger the health and safety of the residents of Person County. There are no liquids in this thing. There's nothing that can leach out. There, there are no radioactive materials, there are no spent nuclear plants, there's no coal ash associated with anything like this. It's, 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 it's clean. Um, and, uh, my colleague did a great job of, of expanding on that, but I just wanted to say, one other aspect is, I, I, I serve on the Nash County Planning Board. I'm in my second three-year term there. I'd served a partial one before that. And, um, we've approved 38 uti- utility-scale, um, solar farms so far. Uh, there are over 2,000 acres of panels in Nash County, which is about 0.02% of the acreage. And that's not the fenced-in area, that's just acres of panels. It might be twice that much if you take all the buffers and all the red, blue line streams and all the, uh, the, the other nonusable areas that are put in there, but, uh, and, and we have not approved one. We did one modification this year, but before that, it's been about two years since we've approved one of those 38, because we're saturated. But basically, the lines are full, the substations are full, and we're done. So they not, they're not coming to us anymore to, to, none of the developers are coming to Nash County to put anymore, because there's nothing, nowhere else to put, but nowhere else to interconnect them. There's plenty of land to put them on, but this, if you can't sell the product, then it's, it's pretty useless. So I would just say that this year, because of the expansion of Raleigh and, and western Nash County, we've approved over 2,000 acres of subdivisions in one night. Uh, there've been several times this year that we've had 12 to 15 agenda items, and they're all subdivisions, and several of them in hundreds of acres. So I think, I asked the, I asked the, the planning staff if they could tell me how many acres we had approved in subdivision this year, but they, they said that's not something they tried, they were going to get it for me, but they didn't get it for me for me to tell you tonight. But I just, from memory, I can tell you one night, we approved over 2,000 acres, and that's all we got in solar farms since the beginning. We're not getting anymore, because the lines are full. So I, I, I just, I was just sharing this with you to, so that you would know from, from somebody who's, who owns the land they're on, somebody who's installed them, somebody who's been on the, on the, the Duke side and interconnected them, that, uh, they're, they are a, a, a quality use for the land, a high productive use of land. As a, as a farmer and a landowner, I appreciate a steady flow of income. It's not dependent on commodity prices or rain. And so for, you know, helps, so my, my family, my son, we can move this land down another generation without, without, without having to go bankrupt or whatever. And, and like I say, if you've got any question on health and safety, or, or I'd be glad to try and answer your questions on that.
Hold on one minute. Hold on one minute, Chris. All right, board members, do you have a comment or question for Chris? Go ahead, Tab.
I don't, I don't know if it would be addressed to you specifically, um, but since you did do interconnection on the site plan, there's a point of interest delineated. Is that the interconnection? On, on the site plan, there is a, um, point of interest specified? Yes, sir.
Okay.
What is that? Is that where it will be interconnected to the grid?
You told me on the north side. There is, there is a point of interest on the north side. That's, that's the ingress, egress, so that they can get into, to, to decide to, to construct it and to maintain.
If the gentleman not, uh, point things out on the map to individual members of the planning board?
If, if no other question for me, I'll excuse myself.
I have one. Chris, I have one. Y'all go ahead, go ahead and explain it, but I have something for Chris. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the point of interconnect is shown right here on the northwest side, um, not too far from Hurdle Mills Road. Yeah, the P, it's, it's listed as the POI, point of interconnect.
That was what I was asking, what the POI was.
Thought you'd come up with an ingress, egress.
Yes.
Chris, I, I would like to ask, um, I've been on this board for quite a few years. We had a gentleman come before us about five years ago, maybe longer. I'm not going to swear to it, but he made, no, it wasn't you. But he made the comment, because we asked him, we asked him, and we were very baffled, because at that particular time, we were having quite a few solar farms coming before us as a planning board, asking for approval. And that was when we were still green, we didn't know what was going on. Uh, they were coming asking for permission to build these solar farms. So we asked a very direct question to him, and he, uh, acknowledged it. And I, we asked, well, how many more solar farms can come? And he acknowledged it. And I, we asked, well, how many more solar farms can come in Person County? He said, oh, not many more, he said, because we're almost maxed out on the transmission. And here we are right now sitting before you, eight hundred acre farm wanting to to come to Person County. I'm asking you, and I may have to ask one of your other members, where, where is the line at? Where, where do we draw from the standpoint of what you spoke of earlier about Nash County being maxed out? Where is Person County maxed out?
The, the lines that come through Person County don't start and stop in Person County. They go to Durham County, they go to Orange County, they go to Wake County, they go. I'm very familiar with the system up there. They go east, they go into Virginia.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Projects in those counties count towards the, those lines. I, I, I looked at one yesterday. It was southeast. I'm not gonna give you any information other than the fact that it was already full. The utility required them to pay two hundred million dollars to just to build another line. It's a, it's the lines full. We're not even gonna try and add any more to it. And that was like towards like towards Gelford County. So I would say I, I don't know exactly all the line capacities. I don't know exactly where all the, 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 the projects are in all the adjacent counties. But once, once that line, if it's, if it's rated for five thousand or five hundred MVA, say, and you put ninety percent on it, that's typically what the utility will allow it to be loaded at. And that's their non emergency rating, but then that's it. You, you know, you got to build another transmission line. These projects can't afford, Duke needs to build another transmission line. They spend two hundred million dollars, put it in a rate base and charge the rate payer. And that's the end of that. And they don't ask anybody. That's just the way it goes. If, if these guys can't afford to spend two hundred million dollars to build a, a new transmission line to, to add any, to add anymore. Now, if you go to some other states, I think like in Texas somewhere, you might find that they've got a different way they do business. But in the state of North Carolina, that's not the way it works. So these guys have to use fill up what it now. You, you asked me if Duke will build another line in, in, in Person County in fifty years or ten years or four? I don't know. I couldn't. But once they fill these lines up regardless of what county. So if Person County doesn't fill them up, I can almost assure you another county will. And so, you know, the, the, the lines will get full. I, I read an article this week that Lynn Good, the CEO of Duke, how, how aggressively they're targeting to go to be carbon neutral by twenty fifty. And they're, and they're, they're really, really aggressively trying to meet that goal. So I would.
I understand.
So they may build a line. I can't say what Duke may or may not do.
I, I, I know you can't. I know you don't have a crystal ball to look through that, but it has bugged me because we've had probably three or four more solar farms come before us. And I'm thinking, well, when is it gonna stop? Because that gentleman, either he wanted his farm to go in, and he would make any kind of statement before us and said, you know, well, you're about maxed out here in Person County. It don't look like it to me.
Well, what, what he was probably referring to, and I don't know. He probably was referring to the distribution lines because they already have their transform. This project is going to install their own substation to match the voltage of the transmission line that's going across the property. Those, those that are already built around, they are connected to distribution lines. They're a lot smaller. They're five, ten megawatts. It's what they are, maybe twenty, thirty, forty acres. That's what they are. But they're using Duke's transformation. Once again, those size projects can't afford to build a substation. Substation, five, ten million dollars. You're talking about a five megawatt project. It's just a pencil. It's not economically viable to do that. And so my guess, what he was talking about was the little five megawatts that they were putting in that Duke was, was was purchased, or that's what they were pushing five, six years ago.
So where is the, where is the line? Where is that line then? Do you, you say that your property here, you're gonna have your own substation? I understand that.
Yes, sir.
So if, if someone comes in and wants to do another ten acres or a hundred acres and they get ten megawatts, I don't know much about that part of it. But where is the draw, draw line there? I mean, I, I want to understand this.
Yes, I understand. For, the, the, the five and ten megawatts are pretty much past tense because the substation exists in substation transformation is already full. You probably have not seen one come through this county for your approval, probably. And so, just like in Nash County, we haven't had one in several years on that side. The ones we are getting now are the fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, hundred megawatts. That's what we got. That's what's are coming in. But we haven't done one of those in two years because there's nowhere, there's plenty of land to put them, but there's no place to connect them to the grid. Once the lines are full, they're full. And all that line, they get full. Some of it got, some of it came in Bladen County, some of it came in Columbus County, wherever that transmission line, wherever it crawls. Whoever uploaded power to that, once it gets, and it's all going to Raleigh. So once it, once it, it goes through Nash County, you know, if, if there's only fifty megawatts left, that's all we got. That's, that's all that's left because the rest of it's been taken out by the other county. Did that answer?
Yes, sir. A good explanation, sir, because that's probably exactly what he was talking about, the five and ten. And, and here you're gonna have your own substation.
Right.
And so that helps think through this whole process, but also I don't want Person County to be one solid solar farm either.
Well, chances are that can't happen.
Thank you very much for your explanation.
Good evening. Hi, my, my name is Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. My address is nine four zero eight North Field Court, Raleigh. I was, I'm a state certified general appraiser. I'm also an MAI through the appraisal institute. I was asked to address the questions of property values around these solar farms and specifically this one. I, I've been looking at this question for about twelve years. In that time, I've looked at over eight hundred solar farms and been looking at solar farms in about nineteen different states, but primarily located here in North Carolina. The, what we've been doing, looking at these solar farms, is we really are looking for sales next to existing solar farms so we can measure if there's any impact on sales price. It's called a matched pair analysis or a paired sales analysis. And we've done that in this case, looking here. We identified twelve solar farms here in North Carolina that we looked at, pulled out thirty two sales of homes that had joined those twelve solar farms. And just look to see, we compare each one to three similar homes that are nearby, but not next to a solar farm to see if we can find any impacts. The, the solar farms we looked at were ranging in size from about five megawatts on up to eighty megawatts. And we were finding no impact on property values. We, we see in each case, we've looked at these, we've called, talked to the brokers. I've got, you've got a copy of the report in the package, I'm sure, but you can see that there's pictures in there and you can see where I've commented from brokers may confirm that the buyers and sellers are aware of the solar farms are there. In some cases, they can actually see the solar farms from their property. And they are showing no impact on the property value, and it hasn't had any impact on the marketability. Further, we've looked at, just looking throughout the southeast, I've found twenty three solar farms that we've looked at. Those go up to six hundred and twenty megawatts. And from those, we've pulled fifty six sales that we've identified and analyzed, and again, finding no impact on property value. And just going nationally, we've looked at thirty seven solar farms. And again, six hundred twenty is still the top end of that and pulled ninety four sales. And looking at those, we're finding no impact on property values. And that, that is consistent with data that's being pulled from university studies, University of Rhode Island, University of Texas, Austin, are coming up with very similar conclusions when they analyze that they're finding no impact on adjoining property values. I've interviewed a number of other folks, researchers, as well as representatives of the ASF MRA. That's the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers. They, they see solar as a complementary agricultural use. They are actually advocating it and putting forward as an additional mix to agricultural uses. And they're seeing not just a no negative impact, they're actually considering a possible positive impact because it puts more demand on the uses, more uses for the land gives it more potential. I've also looked at what are the adjoining uses, where these solar farms are located. We've identified every solar farm we look at. We look to see what, what are the uses around it. We're finding that if we measure the adjoining uses based on acreage, the most common adjoining use is agricultural. We look at the, by number of parcels, the most common adjoining use is residential. They're, they're very much located in these areas where the houses meet the fields because you need to have open space to put the panels in, but you also need to have infrastructure to pull the power out. This is a very common location for solar farms across North Carolina and the southeast. And the other thing I was gonna bring up is I, I do impact analysis for a wide range of different things, not just solar farms. We, we do, I mean, Monday I was at a hearing for an age fifty five and up residential community. And it struck me that it was a really good comparison when you consider what causes a negative impact, an externality on a property. It really falls into these different categories. The, the number one thing that would cause an impact on property values, on adjoining property values would be hazardous material. Coming down from there, we've got odor, noise, traffic, stigma, and then appearance and, and kind of in those descending area, that descending order. Solar farms just don't have characteristics that match any of those descending things until you get down to appearance. Appearance is the one area that you hear people talk about. And it's also the one area where you're, you have a very aggressive landscaping buffering ordinance. The landscaping screen and the setbacks clearly are adequately addressing that. The sales, the closest home at this project is gonna be four hundred and fifty feet away. The match pairs that I'm looking at have homes as close as one hundred feet away, showing no impact on property value. And just looking at the broader context, I've looked at one point six million dollars homes being built. The, the, actually, the entire subdivision of one point six million dollar homes are being built next to an existing solar farm. They're two hundred feet away. So, and they do not have a hundred fifty foot of landscape buffering either. So it's a much more aggressive, I guess, buffering requirements you have here, but all leads towards protecting property values. If we're not finding it at closer distances and with less landscaping, we're certainly not going to find it with bigger distances and more landscaping. But, but getting back to what I was talking about with this age fifty five community I was looking at on Monday, the other alternative uses that this property could be put to residential development, the Future Land Use Plan calls this to go to subdivision residential. Residential subdivisions, when you look at the descending category of things that could cause an impact on adjoining property values, a subdivision would have more noise than a solar farm. It would have more traffic than a solar farm. And it also, since it has no landscaping buffering requirements, would have more of an impact on the appearance. So when you compare these uses and talk about impacts, you also need to consider what are the alternative things that are already allowed there? There's a number of agricultural uses that are allowed on this site today. I, I regularly appraise poultry farms, for example, and I do regularly do sweet potato curing barns. There are twenty foot tall metal buildings that look like a warehouse, but they're allowed on agricultural land. And there's no buffering requirements around them. There's traffic and noise and things of that nature. So again, compared to other uses that are already allowed here, the solar farm is going to be a lot less intrusive and impactful on the neighbors. I'd be happy to go into greater detail or answer any questions. But oh, the, and the other thing that I should point out as compared to a subdivision, though, is at the end of the life of the solar farm, the panels can come out. Long term, solar panels can come out, land can go back to an agricultural use and continue on in that manner. Subdivision goes in is very unlikely it'll ever be anything other than a subdivision going forward. And so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but it is my professional opinion that this proposed project would have no impact on the adjoining property values and also that this is a harmonious use. This is where you find solar farms in North Carolina.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes, this, this concludes our presentation, but I do want to, before we do that, to clarify two points. Now, I think you would want the answers to these. The first is to the point of saturation. Even Duke Energy itself cannot answer that question without doing an abundance of calculations. But we have just consulted among ourselves, all of us have been in multiple states and in many, many counties. We cannot identify one county where the amount of land put into solar has reached one percent of its land. And in fact, in almost every circumstance, it is very well below that, way below that, in fact. Mr. Cleveland wrote an article, I believe we have it in the notebook, but he cites a study. It's the article about balancing agriculture and solar. He cites a study that was done by MIT in which they said if the one hundred percent of all the energy in this country, one hundred percent were solar, it would only be four tenths of one percent of the land mass required. So we're talking about very low numbers. The second point I would like to clarify, and I'm gonna pull this forward. Mr. Allen asked a very good question about the time it would take to get trees to grow. Most of these trees will be at panel height when planted. But the green lines that go around this site are where the existing vegetation is already there. There's nothing that has to be done. The only places where the planted vegetation would be put in is these occasional places you see that are in yellow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I thought I thought there was somewhere in this booklet, which is so, so, so that it was two point something percent of the county would be with this project? Or did I misread it and it was ten, two tenths of?
No, you did not read, uh, misread that. This is an apple and an orange. The, the statistic that you were referring to is that if one hundred percent, and this is a hypothetical. But if one hundred percent of North Carolina's energy, and we have, we are a much more dense state than the country itself, when you consider the vast expanses out west. So that's the apple and orange, but if one hundred percent in a hypothetical of our energy were to come from solar, it could not exceed two point two percent of land mass. But again, we have a lot of energy that comes from nuclear, a, a, a lot from natural gas. It's coming from a lot of places.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
I was just corrected. That's only agricultural land, not total land mass. Just land that is identified. That's right.
Okay, all right. Board members, we, I've got several questions of the gentleman that came up before us. But we can, I guess, hear from the public now and then go back to our concerns probably would be the best. So we're gonna open the floor up. Anyone that would like to come up and speak, please come. Please limit your, your time as little as possible. What you, what you say, Mike? I got, I got Norman Boyett up here first. Norman, you wanna come up?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would just suggest that if there is an existing specific time limitation on each speaker, the chair probably should announce that. Or if the board now wishes to impose rules, you have the authority to do that so that everyone knows what the rules are.
All right, five, five minutes, five minutes for everyone, if you don't mind, please. All right, go ahead, Norman.
What documents to put before the board?
No, sir. Norman, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but that is one rule that I have on this board that when you start presenting stuff, it doesn't give us enough time to absorb what you have showed us. And if you would have given that to the staff, they could have put it in our packet so we could read it. But no, sir, we don't, we don't allow that. I apologize.
I have enough for each board member. I'll just give it to the.
Go ahead, sir.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Norman Boyett. I have come before you all on behalf of the Person County Voluntary Ag District. As chairman of the board and the farmers it represents. I'll be making comments on the solar farm zoning tonight. The projects that that continually approved will take out production of hundreds and possibly thousands of acres of prime farmland and woodland in this. of prime farmland and woodland in this county. The Hurdle Mills Project takes out seven hundred ninety-seven acres. The Brea Project takes out nine hundred and twenty acres. In the documents that I was leaving here, there are eighty-two thousand uh acres left in this county for farmland. These two projects alone are going to yank out seventeen hundred acres total. So we're dwindling that fast. The scale of the plot of these projects will blow the longstanding agriculture community into the humanity in general and the loss of land to provide food and fiber for sustaining. While solar projects uh production is fascinating, it is by no means efficient. The presentation on the Hurdle Mills Project, seven hundred ninety-seven acres to prevent, to bring sixty-five hun- or sixty-five megawatts of energy, that's twelve acres per megawatt. That's not very efficient. To equal our mayo plant's capacity, it takes six square miles of land to equal that capacity and putting that under aluminum glass, silicone, mercury, lead, cadmium, the last of these three being heavy metals and considered very toxic. Once this technology is used up its course, where are we going to put it? Where is it going to be disposed of? It is too high a cost to recycle. So where do we dig that land to put that in? And that's the same goes for battery storage as well. Currently in our county, in uh the document, one of the documents, there's thirty-nine million of revenue coming from agricultural sources in the county. You're taking out the livelihood of farmers in this area when you when you're taking these projects into account. There are three farmers in the Hurdle Mills Project alone leasing a hundred and eight acres of this land who are now having to look for other sources to produce the revenue to sustain their families and the workers that they have. In today's economy, there's no viable uh way for a fall, a small farm to survive. You got to have those economies of scale, just like these solar projects are providing you as what are presenting you as well. Consider the long-run cost and the availability of food and fiber for us consumers. Solar farms are taking out hundreds and not thousands of acres in our county and millions of acres across the country. Once this land is set up with solar panels, it may never come back to production. So less land for food and fiber means less availability for us as consumers. We have not begun to picture food scarcity, as millions already know. The county's land use plan has a goal to preserve formerly and draw aesthetic value. Citizens from neighboring cities like to get away from the hustle and bustle of city life from time to time. But driving this in the county to see the rural landscape of the fields would be pleasing. But if not with solar panels all over this land. Finally, the cost of the taxpayers. Over a hundred billion dollars in subsidies have been put for towards subsidizing these types of projects. That is a hit to us all as taxpayers. And this will be an ever-increasing burden to us as taxpayers. Not to mention the looming national debt, whose bill will soon do a wreaking economic catastrophe that will be felt for each one of us, our kids and our grandkids. So I ask you as the board to uh keep that in mind. Preserve our land for food and fiber opposed to zoning projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyett. Ray Fashie?
Thank you, board. My name is Ray Fashie. I live at eighty-nine thirty Hurdles Mill Road. I'm a lifelong resident of the Hurdle Mills Community. And would I be out of order, Chairman, if I asked all those that are against this solar facility to stand in the audience?
Yes, sir, you would be out of order.
I would be out of order, sir. Okay.
Please sit down.
All right. Uh, well, I don't plan to speak about my personal desires regarding the rezoning for solar development. Rather, I want to focus on the guidelines that were adopted by Person County that this board uses to make those decisions on rezoning. And based on that information, I hope that you will decide against rezoning and support the overall Hurdle Mills Community for the following reasons. And first of all, you've quoted the Land Use Development Plan. And I quote from it also that it involves protecting prime agricultural areas from the adverse effects of more intensive development. The pattern of land development within the county will have a tremendous impact on the viability of all farm operations and on the livability and quality of residential life now present and future county residents. There are three goals of the seven that in my mind explicitly are against a solar development. First goal is land use. Promote an orderly and efficient land use development pattern, which allows for a variety of land uses while being sensitive to environmental concerns. Fencing off seven hundred ninety-seven acres of is not sensitive to the environment. Cutting off over five hundred acres of timber is not sensitive. Putting solar panels on acres and acres of wetlands is not sensitive. Taking approximately a hundred and ten acres of farmland away from the local farmers is not sensitive. Another goal, community appearance goal. Maintain and enhance the character and identity of Person County, including established rural communities, farmland and woodlands, historical sites, and other features that represent the area's heritage. Seven hundred ninety-seven acres of so solar development would devastate the Hurdle Mills Community and five hundred acres of woodland would be devastated. The objective in that category was ensure future development contributes to the aesthetic appearance of the county while limiting development of unsightly uses that detract from community appearance. As they stated itself, it'll take two years probably of construction. There will be a very big mess. It'll take another seven to ten years before the buffers in the open areas actually get up where they'll screen the uh solar panels. Third goal, natural environment. Protect water quality, significant natural features and other natural resources that have ecological, recreational, or other important values. Again, five hundred acres of woodland cut down, removed. What's that going to do to climate warming? You know, CO2 emissions absorbed by trees. What's that going to do to CO2 emissions in the area? Person County Farmland Preservation Plan adopted in two thousand sixteen. Two of the five recommendations, in my mind, are directly against the solar development. Adopt a land use and design standards to support agriculture. Large solar development totally contradict that recommendation. Investigate implementing more farmland preservation tools. This is definitely not a farmland preservation tool. Uh, it's number one on the county strategic plan. Protect our land. Uh, much of this land is farmland and woodland and should be preserved as such. The in the Utilities Commission write-ups, there are actually two letters from the Utilities Commission, one from the Department of Agriculture and the other from the uh the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program that discouraged the solar farms in this area. I could give those to you if you so desire. Approximately two hundred forty-four acres of this proposed project is zone residential, has been since Person County zoned. Uh, our forefathers obviously zoned it residential for a reason, probably to maintain the agricultural and residential integrity and building a solar development is not sufficient reason to change that residential zoning. Another important factor is it must be in harmony with the area. Hurdle Mills is a rural, tight-knit farmland community. Uh, eight hundred acre solar development is definitely not in harmony. And much of this two hundred forty-four acres, as I said, is zone residential. Uh, residents purchased this land, built houses, grew families under the impression that their land was protected by residential means. And we would expect that you guys maintain that residential status and not approve that rezoning. These uh another factor, I guess, in making a rezoned decision is that the plan will not substantially injure or value adjoining or abutting property. It says property, not plural properties, but property. You know, I think that solar development attorneys with their experts will argue that point consistently, but I'm convinced that devaluation occurs in some cases, and I'll give you a prime example. My son and his wife Jennifer purchased approximately twenty acres of the residentially zoned property about ten eight years ago. Built a house and now I've got two fantastic grandchildren. They had no idea that property would be basically surrounded by solar panels. In fact, if it's built as planned, they're probably surrounded by on three plus sides by solar panels. Uh, how attractive will that be on the market? Uh, asked ourselves, asked each one of you, would you buy a facility or a house or a property that has solar panels on three plus sides of it? So they can argue all they want to, but you can't convince me that it won't devalue it. A solar farm of that size is unprecedented in this county, so we don't have anything to base it on. We don't have any Person County data to base it on. And basing it on something from somewhere else in North Carolina is just not feasible. The buffers in the ordinance that the county has to protect the rights of the landowners is not adequate. Again, as they stated, in open areas, which there are quite a few on Siderfield Road, there's quite a few on Whitfield Rogers Road. There's quite a few on uh Hurdle Mills Road. They're denoted by the yellow on the map. Those will be planted with trees and shrubs approximately three foot high. How long is it going to take them to get fifteen foot high to cover the uh those solar panels? I suspect if they grow thirty foot in ten years, it's going to take at least, you know, half that to get to fifteen foot coverage. So basically, you know, what about the ten, what about the time up to ten years and the time of construction? You know, uh, does the community just have to put up with that ugly view? The solar farm has addressed most of the items uh as far as the airport. Uh, I do work with the airport some and I was consulted uh this week by our consultant of the airport plus the uh the deputy director of the Department of Aviation in North Carolina, and both of them strongly suggested that a so total solar glare analysis be done before we approve a solar facility that close to the existing airport. So that's something that we will address as we go forward. But Person County citizens don't have the funding nor the knowledge to compete against these expensive attorneys who are, of course, hired by the solar company. Uh, they're paid, everybody else who's sitting in here are here on their own time and for their own benefit because we love the community and we want it to stay as is as much as possible. Uh, in our best effort, the Hurdle Mills Community and I provide you the following summary, appealing to each of you that you will vote against the proposed zoning change. Person County has a comprehensive land use plan to guide zoning decisions. Three of the five, three of the seven goals in that plan are explicitly against the idea of massive solar development. Person County has a farmland preservation plan adopted in two thousand sixteen. Two of the five recommendations of that plan contradict the idea of converting large tracts of agricultural farmland to commercial solar development. Number one on the county strategic plan is protect our land. Rezoning for a large solar development is totally against that philosophy. Approximately eight hundred acres of solar development is in no way in harmony with the area. Go down to Hurdle Mills Road, imagine eight hundred acres of solar development. Tell me how that's going to be in harmony. As much as farmland and woodland is going to be detrimentally disturbed. Approximately eight hundred acres of solar development that wraps around a residence twenty-acre house and property indisputably will substantially injure the value of that property. Like I said earlier, ask yourself, would I purchase twenty acres surrounded by solar panels? Please protect our residential zone properties. Please increase the buffer as buffers are not adequate as they are. Please reject the solar company's request to rezone the entire property. Rezoning, even rezoning the two hundred forty-four acres of residential should not even be a consideration. Again, thank you for your time and I hope you will consider the impact of the Hurdle Mill residents.
Thank you, Mr. Fashie.
Cynthia Lynch? Good evening. I've been interested in land use just about all my life. My father was on the planning board for years, so every night at dinner I heard about that. So when I went to college, I took some courses, I took some more courses. Um, I ended up being a planning board clerk.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Cynthia Lynch, three ninety-five Union Grove Church Road. Okay, I thought my name was mentioned. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, ended up spending ten years as a planning board clerk. Uh, during that time, I also was a land use administrator for a while, was a zoning officer for a while. And then I spent twenty years as a zoning board of adjustment member. Um, so I've been involved with several applications that went to court. And I've learned that it doesn't matter what a board member thinks because the board isn't going to ask what you based your decision on. The judge is going to look at the record, use you the transcript of the meeting and any reports and correspondence in the file. That being the case, I and the others here that are coming before you are saying some of these things, um, things that you're probably well aware of. Uh, this is no way pleased to be any kind of insult. We understand you are intelligent people, but we need to get these things on the record. So if we're saying anything that's obvious, please forgive us. Um, we understand you are smart people, but we need to get on the record in case this does go to court. It needs to be part of that record. Now, today I'm speaking um as a member of the public. Now, when I was a board member, I would often ask questions that I knew the answer to, but I would ask those questions to get those responses on the record. But today I'm here as a member of the public, um, being making statements. But again, my goal is the same, to get to get some of these items on the record. Now, as you know, the current solar ordinance allows um for over ten acres when it's in a uh the B one, which is the highway commercial or the general industrial or the rural conservation. Now, I think I heard the applicant's attorney say that industrial has to happen in rural conservation. No, as you well know, there is an industrial zone when that's where industrial belongs. Um, and also, of course, there's also residential property that's involved in this particular tract, which is not zoned um for this size of an uh solar facility. Now, if the application were to be approved, it would allow a solar facility in what is, of course, a residential zone. Now, there's often mentioned in this type of application that the uh landowners uh has a right to use their land. What's often forgotten is that the current landowners surrounding the site in question also have rights. Those that have the property next to a residential zone have the expectation that that property will be used for that purpose. As a Board of Adjustment member, I try to be careful to do no harm. As I I as I see it, these these property owners that are not part of the application, um, they're just minding their own business. And then suddenly they find they need to defend their right to maintain a local character that they thought was protected by zoning. You know, zoning is a two-edged sword. Um, it may limit what can be done, but it should also protect people so they understand what what they can, what expected and should protect them from what is not expected. A comment was made that this is all about the surrounding property owners. Well, I'm not a surrounding property owner, but I'm a resident of Person County, and this affects the whole county, not just who was ever next door to it. And that's why I'm here, and I care about my neighbors. Um, I care about the whole county. And um rural conservation, which is what most of this is, the goal of that, um, and I've talked with planning and I've gotten a couple of different answers because they weren't here when that was put into place. But I just take the term rural conservation. To me, that sounds like we want to conserve a rural lifestyle, which is why it is such an open-ended zone. Because there's so many things that happen in a rural area. There are so many different things that need to go on to maintain farming. Um, although I come from New Jersey, as you can tell, I don't sound like I come from here. Um, but I have I have watched what happened there and what happened there. I don't want to have happen here. I lived in Passaic County for most of my life, uh, as my mother did. She grew up on a chicken farm. Um, there, the whole town now is just houses, okay? Within like thirty years, it went from having chickens and sheep to having just houses. Um, my family moved up to Sussex County to get back to the rural atmosphere. Uh, we were there about ten, fifteen years and a local agway store closed because farmers just couldn't maintain. And so they started to lose their support services. And so I'm very concerned about what I'm starting to see here. As we take farmland away for other uses, those support services have a harder and harder time to maintain themselves. They don't have that agricultural base. Um, I went from having to just go down the down the road on my way to the local store fifteen minutes um to get sheep feed, now I had to go across the county to get sheep feed. It makes it harder and harder to do business. I don't want to see that happen here. I don't want to see that happen here. And so as we talk about our concern for maintaining this rural conservation, that's the concern. Are we worried about a couple acres here or a couple acres there? Are they crucial? Maybe not. But at what point do you get that tipping point? Where these, these auxiliary services, the suppliers, can no longer afford to be in business? And now where the farmers go? It makes it harder and harder. It's not an easy thing to be a farmer as it is. We don't need to make it any harder. And that's, that's just been a personal crusade of mine because I love Person County, and I, I don't want to see it go the way of New Jersey. I'm here because New Jersey failed, and I want to make sure that doesn't happen here. I have a, a few comments in general that have just, just come up. I mentioned about the industrial. When it comes to property values, now, I, I haven't ever sat in a solar ordinance, but I sat in a couple cellphone, cell tower applications, and they've got a lot of similarities. And we had a fellow come before us and swear up and down that it would not hurt the property values, had all this proof. We looked at his paperwork a little more carefully. He basically worked as an executive locator. So the neighborhoods he were talking about were the kind that executives from these big companies come in for about three years and get moved on again. They don't care about a cell tower for three years. They just want a nice big house with a good school for their kids. So you have to look at reports very carefully and see, do they really match the kind of land that you're talking about, the kind of situation you're talking about? That one obviously did not. They talk about that there haven't been any solar applications for a while. Well, I think if we look at what's been going on at the Fed level under the Trump administration, they had taken away a lot of the programs that were encouraging solar. So for a while you didn't have that, so they weren't coming forth. Now we have a new administration, that's changed. Now you see them coming out. Question about how much on the transmission lines do we have? Well, let's not forget, we have two power plants that are going to be decommissioned. There's a lot of power flowing to those. That's going to go away potentially, almost certainly. I have a feeling there's a lot more capacity in those lines in Person County than there are in other places. How many other places have two power plants that have all this infrastructure to support the power coming out of them? I think we have to be very, very, very careful about what we do with these solar facilities. Yes, we could have a whole bunch of them because I think the truth. Now, I'm not an expert, there'll be others that come before me that know a lot more about power than I do. But just looking at what's there, it sure looks to me like we could be just a real hotspot for this kind of development. Because once the power plants go, they still have all those wires that they want to feed power into. Bottom line, this type of development, yeah, it provides a nice amount of money for the property owners. Yeah, more than they can make with tobacco or trees or whatever, but at what price? And yes, it's going to give us more taxes. Of course, it's going to give us more taxes if the, if the land is, is, is under a farmland type assessment. Of course, you're going to, to get more. But think of the importance of those agricultural uses. And bottom line is, we look at what the criteria is. And what you've been given for reasonableness and consistency is 1.0 in the master plan, the land use plan, to promote orderly and efficient land use development plan. That was the one that your, 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 your planning department came up with. I'm going to have to disagree with that. And you hear from, from Mr. Fushi, I think he covered that pretty well. I would just look at, under that 1.0, the point about the farmland. And of course, this is not doing the farmland. It's not, it's not supportive of that at all. So. Whoop, I think I ran over my time a little bit, that'll be it. Yeah, yeah, I am. So I, I appreciate the time that you've given me. And so I would appreciate that you would vote against this. I do not think it's the best thing for Person County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Come on. Wrong seat, is that Mr. C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you come right on, let's see.
Wait for my cue. Good evening. I'm John Seep, I live at 277 Barefoot Landing Lane in Samara. Yes, it's a distance away from Hurdle Mills. Little bit about myself. I own over 100 acres currently in Person County. Some of it is rural conservation. Some of it is along 57. If I wanted to use it for commercial purposes, I could. I own a house that's residential. I purchased all of it. I didn't inherit it. I bought it knowing what it was. I knew what I was buying, I knew what I wanted to do with it, and how it was zoned before I bought it. I'm not here representing the solar farm, and I don't work for Fox Rothschild LLC. I represent Person County citizens not wanting solar panels littering the countryside of Person County. I've worked for 12 years in nuclear power, 23 in aerospace. The greenest form of reliable power that you can have, contrary to what he testified about the last time. But I'm not going to talk about nuclear power. I'm going to try to cover things that Ray didn't touch, and Cindy didn't touch, and the other speaker didn't touch, but you've had outstanding expert citizens already before you. Currently, you have a bill called HB 951. And if it passes, it'll require replacement power to come from within Person County. So Mayo goes away, HEICO goes away. The power generating capacity would be required to be replaced from forms of power generation inside Person County. So let's think about that. I'm listening to the applicant's expert's testimony. We heard about power lines, we heard about max capacity. So let's, let's think about that for a second. Not that I agree with the actual testimony, but let's think about what was said. If our output, and our power output, that is, from the solar farm is 65 megawatts, that's going to take 65 megawatts of capacity of whatever transmission line it's connecting to. That is going to be at max capacity day one, in the middle of the summer, high noon. The rest of the time, it's taking up 65 megawatts of capacity that it's not providing. Nuclear power would, coal plant would, cash power plant would, but I'm not here to talk about that. I want to talk about what they just talked about. It's midnight, what's it putting out? It's winter, it's morning, it's evening, it's cloudy. Maybe you want to talk Texas. That's wasted capacity. You heard about Nash County. Now, Nash County was oddly brought up the last testimony, and I'm glad that the expert corrected his numbers because he said 5,000, he corrected them tonight to 2,000. 2,000 acres approximately, current solar farms in Nash County. Nash County is bigger than Person County. Nash County doesn't regulate solar farms through ordinance. They have another method that they use. Application for a 1,057 acre solar farm was applied in March of this year, and it didn't get approved until May because there was a whole bunch of county changes that, that occurred. One of them was that the fees were $5 a panel. Their testimony says this thing's built for 205,000 panels. You do the math, times $5, it's over $1 million, okay? That got changed so that Nash County solar farm cost about $88,000 in, in fees. It was okay to delay it from March till May. They changed it to $1,000 a megawatt, by the way. So I think there's some things here we need to look at. Currently, we have a moratorium that's going to be put in place, and I suggest we use it. Let me tell you why. If you look at the map that was projected up on the screen, you'll see how much of this current solar farm is taking out residential, and there's a little bit of commercial. We've already talked about, well, Tom Terrell plopped a notebook that he paid for in front of you with a lot of advertisements for the LLC and their clients. The county citizens have paid for two plans. One of them is a farmland preservation plan, the other one is a comprehensive land use plan. We paid for those. Results of that says, we protect our, our agriculture, and also, we care about economic development. How many jobs is this thing going to take? It's going to take 800 acres off for 20, with an option for another 20 years, past that for 40 years. Is that what you want? The people of Hurdle Mills, they have a quaint little community. If you talk about Person County, it happens to be one area of the county that you don't hear people complaining, griping, and has problems. It is a unique area of the county. Are we going to screw that up? I don't live there, I don't want it screwed up. It's interesting. TVA, Tennessee Valley Authority, really doesn't allow solar on their land. If you take a look at their regulations, they'll allow it if it's on a campground that's on their property. Duke owns lots of land, they own the transmission lines. You want solar panel in the county? Put it on Duke's property. Put it on stuff that's rural already, not residential and not commercial. We need those. So when I, I, I got a problem when people buy property and it's zoned residential, and somebody comes in and wants to change it. If you listen to Ray, it's always been residential. That was designated by the county. I don't know that the people who own these three land tracts live in this county. You're hearing from the residents of the county. I think that carries great weight. I think the fact that it's already zoned residential and commercial, they want to do what they want to do with their rural. I am a land use rights property owner. So Tom, you heard it from me first. I want to use my property as I see fit, but I also buy that which is zoned and appropriate for my use. So I ask you to deny this request. At least the portion, and I think if you deny the portion that's residential, you're throwing the whole thing out. I don't care about the rural stuff. Residential should be residential. The commercial, we need, and this doesn't generate any jobs from within the county. So it doesn't add to that aspect of what we need. That was number one on the comprehensive land use plan. Number two was protect the rural. So I think you guys have an obligation to the citizens of the county that paid for both of those reports and deny this request. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Lynch, Paul Lynch? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Lynch, I live in Hurdle Mills. By way of quick background, I have a degree in environmental engineering from Rutgers University. I have spent over 35 years in the electric power industry, and I am CEO of a company that designs and supplies custom built equipment for electric power plants. That said, I am not an expert in photovoltaics, and I don't want to represent myself as such. The folks who came before me have done a great job in outlining the problems with the application. You obviously get to hear a one sided view of this, and I want to focus my comments on two things. One of them is under item 2.1 of the applicant's response to the land use plan, where they state, solar energy lowers the cost of energy to citizens in Person County over time. I'm going to address that. The second thing I want to address is one that the applicant's attorney opened the door for me, and I'm going to walk through it, but I'll get to that shortly. Now, here's the problem with solar. I'm going to flesh out some things that Mr. Seep said in terms of what the output of this plant really means. Solar panels, like they're talking about, produce energy when they're hit with sunlight. It starts with almost zero, when the sun comes up, ramps up in a curve, goes across and comes down again in the evening, back to zero again at night, okay? There are four peak hours in the day when those panels will put out incongruent a total of 65 megawatts when the sun is shining, okay? Now, when you go to the National Weather Service, you look at how many sunny days we have here in this area in North Carolina, and it turns out on average you have 108 days of sunshine. So you take 108 days, and you calculate the number of hours, you get roughly 400 hours of peak output where this plant will generate 65 megawatts, okay? That's 16.6 full days of energy, or times two, since of course, there's no power at night. That gives you 34 days out of the year where you will get 65 megawatts, more or less, okay? Now, one month, one month of full output is what you're going to get from that plant. And therein lies the problem with solar energy. It is inconsistent power supply. We as a society have become very spoiled, okay? We walk over to that wall over there and we flip a switch, we expect lights to come on, all right? You go to your home and you open your refrigerator, you expect cold air to come out. It's, it's warm, so you go over your thermostat, you turn thermostat down, and you expect cold air to come out of your air conditioning system. Well, that happens 24 hours a day. These solar plants do not generate power 24 hours a day. That results in the necessity for Duke Energy or somebody to provide backup power supplies for when it's nighttime, for when it's cloudy, for when it's rainy, or for when the plants are not generating full power. That energy's got to come from somewhere, and guess who's going to pay for it? The rate payers who pay the bills to these utility companies. Solar energy increases your electric costs, it does not decrease it at all. Proof, look at what's happened in Southern California. Those people down there are paying three times the kilowatt hour cost that we are because most of their power comes from renewable energy sources. In the next 10 years, ladies and gentlemen, your power bills are going to triple thanks to green energy. And that's a fact. Unless, of course, you want to go back to living in trees and not have power when you want it, okay? That's not going to happen, so the only option is your power bills are going up, period. Now, the other thing I want to address, and this is something that irks me, honestly. The applicant's attorney stated that these panels are going to be built in Canada. Now, this is not really relevant to a zone change request, but he did bring it up, and it's something that is just simply not true, sir. If you go to the website of the Canadian Solar Company and look at where their manufacturing facilities are, you find that, first of all, their website has changed somewhat significantly in the last month because there was a time when they listed all their manufacturing facilities. That page is now gone. Now, I don't think it has to do with this project, let's be fair, okay? What has changed is three weeks ago, the Biden administration put a moratorium on the import of solar panels from certain regions in China where the, where the Chinese Communist Party has been engaging in ethnic genocide against some native tribal peoples, and that's something we don't like. So we said, that's it, you're not going to import your garbage here now, okay? And this particular company's main production facility, before they took it off their website, is located in Suzhou City in Jiangsu Province, China. Okay, now, try and find on their website where they currently do production. Well, you've got to dig real, real deep. In fact, you have to go to the filing they made with the United States Securities and Exchange Commission because they do have some operations and sales here in the US, they're required by US law to do this. So you go to that exchange commission report, and boy, you have to dig, but you go down to page 34 and 35, and you find out, first of all, that all the major stockholders in this company are Chinese citizens. Number two, they state, as of December 31st, 2020, there were 16.1 gigawatts of solar panel manufacturing, approximately 12.5 of which is located in China, 3.6 in Southeast Asia. Now, you do the percentages and you add them up, 78% in China, 22% in Southeast Asia. When I went to school, that was called 100%. These panels are not going to be manufactured in China. In the same report, one of the vulnerabilities of the company is that they have only two sources of raw materials, both of which are, guess where? Okay, exactly, they're in China. These panels are not going to be built in Canada, they're going to be They're gonna be built in China. They're gonna be brought over here. They might be shipped through a warehouse in Canada, but they are Chinese manufactured, period. And anything else is just plain wrong. Now...
We're approaching the seven-minute mark.
All right. I'm just, I'm just about done. May I just finish up, sir? Thank you. The people who've spoken before me have, at some length, talked about land use and agricultural use and what have you. I wanna echo what my dear wife said. We come from a state that allowed farmland to be consumed by other uses, upzoning, as it was called. Now, this, the applicant called this downzoning. I'm sorry, but you take 800 acres or whatever's inside the buffer zone, ship it down to bare dirt and cover it with aluminum and glass and silicone. That's not farming. It's not farming. If you allow your farmland base to be taken away to other uses, okay? The character of Person County is going to change and it's going to change drastically and you are not going to like it. Don't let it happen here. Please vote this application down. Thank you very much.
Anthony?
Yes.
Excuse me, Anthony. Anthony?
Yes.
Excuse me one second.
May I be excused for five minutes?
Let's take a five-minute break for whomever and we'll be back here just in five minutes. Thank you.
Anthony, go ahead. Go ahead, Anthony.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. First of all, I want to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to speak here this evening. And I want to thank our crowd here from Hurdle Mills for being here to support us as well. I'm sure like most of y'all, I'd have rather been at home watching RFD channel tonight.
Anthony.
So anyway, my name is Anthony Horton and I reside at 7233 Hurdle Mills Road in Hurdle Mills.
Thank you, sir.
With my wife and three children. I'm a lifelong resident of Hurdle Mills. Work here as a rural Medicare. The proposed industrial solar park, which will be located in sight from my backyard and will span over 1.7 miles to Satterfield Road and one mile along that highway. We don't see that on their charts that they head up as far as the buffers, okay? I will see these from my backyard if they are built for at least, what, seven to 10 years? Okay? Now, before I start about the proposed destruction of residential farm and forest land, I want to thank my predecessors who have spoken and have done an outstanding job in their research and facts presented on why rural residential farmland and forest land should not be rezoned. It would be redundant for me to go over the same points already presented. So what are my sentiments? Well, sometimes anger, sometimes fear, sometimes anxiety. I have anxiety right now. My wife actually left while the lawyers were speaking because of her anxiety. But anyway, and sometimes I just simply wonder why these landowners seem not to care about the community in their, in their land. I guess they do not live anywhere near here, so they would not experience the destruction and the complete alteration of our beloved landscape on a day-by-day basis. We will experience that for two years. It will take two years to construct this if it is allowed. Two years of devastation, two years of trucks entering the highway that is already a dangerous road, okay? Hurdle Mills is a very dangerous highway already because of the traffic, but the construction trucks going in and out, okay? The burning of underbrush, okay? That will happen. That's something that will happen over two years. It would take approximately two years for this project to be built. So that's, it's not just to snap our fingers and it's done. So we've got to understand that as well. Not to mention being butted up against people's houses and property. I mean, you know, it's just, it is, it is not in harmony with our landscape, okay? So anyway, I guess they're not live anywhere near here, so they would not experience this destruction. But you know, maybe some of the owners do care about the land, or maybe they did. Well, one owner several years ago purchased what I always knew as the Bass Farm. Now, of course, the people here, they know what I'm talking about when I say the Bass Farm. I would see him on my travels to and from our farm cleaning up and bringing debris out of the woods to be disposed of. So obviously, he had a love for the land at that time. Now, what about the owner of the land that I always knew as a Kate's Farm, located mostly down the Satterfield Road? Obviously, he cared enough about the land to allow other local farmers to tend that land rather than just letting it go or selling it out to a developer. Now, I don't know either of these landowners, but I do know a little bit of history about Mr. Hester Kates and Mr. Odell Kates, who once owned this land right there at the intersection down Satterfield Road and Hurdle Mills Road. And I've basically been told this from my father and from other, you know, individuals in the community. Now, while living, there were an intricate, intricate part of shaping the farming dynamics of the Hurdle Mills community. They obviously enjoyed tending the land and they dearly loved and wanted the preservation of the land to stand the test of time by passing along to their family. It is my belief, though, that outside forces, i.e. the solar company and their investors. Ah, I keep losing my place. I should have highlighted that. It is my belief that outside forces, i.e. the solar company and investors, have tried to influence their decision-making on the future of the land and its uses. What if someone really gained if integrity is lost? I want to reach out to these landowners. I think that there is one here tonight. I don't know this landowner. Somebody pointed him out to me. So I think he is here in the crowd tonight. Not as a desperate plea, because I believe the evidence presented here tonight is overwhelmingly against rezoning this land. My predecessors have done an excellent job and they're not paid to do this. But as an opportunity for these landowners to make the right decision, to preserve our God-given land, to keep intact the attributes that make this small, tight-knit community of residents, small businesses, farmland and forestry, what it is. And I believe they still have the option to deny and rescind this, their land. And I ask God to continue to bless Hurdle Mills in Person County. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Kevin Kates.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Kates. Samuel Kevin Kates. I own the property of Satterfield Road. Nobody knew I was coming here tonight. None of these gentlemen knew I was coming tonight. I wanted to listen to start with. A lot of stuff's been said. A lot of passionate people have made passionate pleas about what I should do with my land. I just, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna make it very simple. Please approve the rezoning request of my land. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna give the option to anyone else that haven't signed up, but I try to always make it public. Anybody else would like to come up and either speak for or against this conditional use permit? Conditional use zoning.
Conditional zoning.
Conditional zoning. Excuse me. All right, anybody else? Okay. We, at this point, can discuss between ourselves as a board, but I want us to ask questions of whomever, especially the representation that, that came before us. So let's open the floor up to them and talk about it, and then we discuss it amongst ourselves. So, any questions? Any comments?
Well, I have a question. There was talking about the value of the land. How likely would it be that you would remove the solar panels? I heard someone in this group say earlier that it was nothing to just remove it if you wanted to, but what's the likelihood of that happening once someone, you know, creates the solar farm?
I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you with your mask. I think you're asking a question related to the decommissioning to make sure the panels. There was something said that was not correct, is that there is no recycling market or value in these panels. That is absolutely incorrect. The engineering studies and estimates every single time a solar farm is done show that the decommissioned value, the recycling value, is either just below or near, and I've seen some that show, depending upon the markets, above the cost of decommissioning. To understand that, the cost of decommissioning or removal is very low. You just come in and you just pop out the panels and you pull up the post with a hydraulic arm like on a tractor, and it's very quick. It doesn't take two years. It will be done in two or three months, period. So the cost is much lower. You recycle a tremendous amount of that, but there is a bond that is posted. And I think your planning director could answer a question about that. So removal is a guarantee because of a surety that is posted with the county. And it then goes back to whatever, you know, to farmland, timberland, whatever. Unlike a subdivision, which is permanent, unlike every house that has been built, that's permanent. But a solar farm is a temporary lease.
All right. Any other questions of the?
I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Is land currently being farmed? It is being farmed. What's being grown there? Did you say tobacco? I couldn't hear you very well.
I need you to speak into the mic for the record because we're recording and we're also taking minutes, please.
I'm Ken Hawkins. I reside at 1885 Pondexter Road in Hurdle Mills, North Carolina. And this will back up to my farm.
What, you, what's the, did you answer my question about what's being farmed there?
This year on the wooded places, tobacco. Last year it was soybeans, wheat, corn.
Is the, is the entire area that we're considering being farmed at this time or just part of it?
Just part of it. On the wooded farm, I can speak for the wooded farm.
What's on the, what's on the rest of the land that is not being farmed? Is it woodland? Is it grassland? What is it? It's what? For the entire parcel, the 700 acres we're talking about? It's timber. Okay, okay.
Did you get the answer you wanted?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Come on up to the podium, sir, and identify your name with your name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Moore.
Well?
I'm at 1406 Union Grove Church Road, Hurdle Mills, North Carolina.
Okay.
My question to the planning board is, how does this meet any kind of criteria under the Falls of the Noose watershed plan that I myself just got subject to, to get a building permit for a commercial building that falls under that same criteria?
I agree, Bruce.
And 800 panels, or 800 acres of panels, in my common sense mind
Right.
affects the watershed.
Right. Thank you, Bruce.
It should not be approved because of that.
I understand. I agree with you. Now, that was gonna be, go ahead and sit down, Bruce. Thank you for that. I don't know who in your committee wants to address that, but wait just a minute before you speak. Come on up here. Come on, because if you're gonna answer, I want to tell you because on, that was one, Bruce, that I had already read, red flag. And that is, and, and in their, in their booklet here, they have got, identify it so that everyone can follow along, stream protection on one and two, page one and two, you address that. Now, I need some, I need some clarification because it's like Bruce says, he brings it up, you, under 24, 24% proposed impervious surface. Now, it's hard for me to put my arms around, if you go in there and clear-cut everything, and that's basically what you'll do, is clear-cut the whole 700, 800 acres, whatever, 500 and some is what you'll clear-cut. When y'all pull the, the roots and the, the stumps and everything up, y'all, the, does Deener or whoever, they don't call that as a disruption to the, the property, 24%? And you've got in here, it's 3% to 5%? And I'm sorry, I, I can't, I need some explanation.
I'm, I'm gonna, after I speak, I'm gonna have a civil engineer come up.
Okay.
I will ask, answer it this way. Number one, removing trees does not create a pervious surface.
Right.
When you put up the panels, the panels are properly and appropriately spaced so that rainwater that hits a panel falls to the ground. NCDQ has looked at this issue for years. They have studied solar farms and they have determined, based on those studies, that, that panels should not be categorized as pervious surface because they do allow the rainwater to hit the ground below. Now, the fact that a tree is removed does not create an issue because grasses native to this region are planted in its place. So you have something that's holding that soil and that would be absorbent of rainwater coming down. Now, I can't address how the Falls of the Noose rules affect this gentleman. I don't know where he lives. I don't know what the issue was raised. But I can tell you as a fact that every single environmental law that applies to a shopping center developer, to a home builder, applies to a solar developer. Now, you heard it said a moment ago that there will be panels placed in wetlands. All of us cringe because it's a legal impossibility. They're not let out of or released from the laws that are adopted by our state and federal governments. You have to stay out of the wetlands. So those laws apply. DEQ has said it is not impervious. And as to the, Cory, would you explain how the impervious surface?
Let me, okay, hold on a minute. Let me clarify. I want to clarify something now. Is this in the Falls of the Noose waterfall?
As stormwater administrator, first of all, everyone gets hung up on impervious? The Falls does not regulate impervious. It regulates disturbed area. There is a big difference. Impervious is in our Tarpamlico watershed and in most of the watersheds throughout North Carolina. The Falls watershed regulates disturbed if they go in and disturb the soil. For example, to dig up the ground to put in the pole to put the solar panel on. That's what we're regulating. For non-residential, if they exceed 12,000 square foot of a threshold, they have to do a, an extensive review. Sounds like Mr. Moore has gone through it with our stormwater consulting engineer. That step typically comes after the Board of Commissioners approves or denies the project. It's not required before they come before to get approval because the monies do not need to be spent at this point. But if this project were to be approved by the commissioners, the next step would be stormwater review with our consulting engineer because I'm guessing it exceeds 12,000 square feet of disturbed area for the project. There would also be commercial plan review and other reviews done. But I just want to be clear because I've, I've had that question posed to me from quite a few citizens who are not looking at impervious. Now, DEQ does have separate regulations for if you disturb more than half of an acre. At a state level, they have other regulations that they have to go through. But a lot of people talk about the Falls. The Falls does regulate disturbance, not impervious.
This is in?
This is in the Falls, and again, it would be going through a review if it's approved by the Board of Commissioners.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, you can bring your engineer up if you want. I don't know if everybody's pretty satisfied.
I'm good. You're good? I'm good.
Okay, Cory, I'm fine. Sorry. All right. Other comments? Other questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I was curious. And, and I guess the planning director would need to educate me on this a little bit. Because they are, you know, looking at the map, they're, they're doing this whole parcel, for instance, A, Area A411 is this big area. Could it have been, are they required to do the entire parcel to make this happen, or could they have done only part of it and that would have been, been okay?
They could apply, and I don't know why there's a delay in this, they could apply for a partial request. We encourage, whenever possible, for rezonings and projects of this nature to follow the property bounders because it makes it very easy for our GIS department to map it. But if they decided that they wanted to do a portion of it, then we would have to have the meets and bounds of the portion that they wanted to do because, again, we have to map this from a GIS standpoint, what was approved and what zoning changed.
Yeah, I, I guess, and the reason I'm asking this question, it seems to me that, yeah, okay, I understand that the total coverage would be a lot less. On the other hand, a lot of what we've heard tonight, they would have avoided if they had kept at least in the RC section, opposed to incorporating some of this that's B1 and R. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Any other concerns, questions to the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the applicant, since we should be focusing on environmental concerns, I'm just curious if any of you who are experts and have these extensive backgrounds in solar panels have an example of where the solar panels really did affect a community in any way? Was it pollution of water? Was it any particles emitted in the air and other things where, you know, you go to the EPA website, there are so many things, right? That, that are harmful to our environment, where humans, animals, vegetation, any of those things? And, and can you please limit your statement to under a minute, please? Thank you.
Yeah, Tommy Cleveland, and I'm not sure, I understand the question. Have I seen examples of where solar panels cause an impact?
Anything. If you, you, you're one of the people, right? You say you've worked on these in various states or whatnot, right? Over a couple of years. Have you ever had an experience where in one of the states, it's like, oh, oh my goodness, like something shattered and, and this spilled, and now we have this problem? Or we have a lot of natural disaster issues, right? A tornado came through. I, I don't know. Do you have any examples? Because of goal one is about environmental concerns. So I'm asking, have you heard of any severe, or have you witnessed any severe environmental concerns around solar panels?
No, I'm aware of problems where parts of systems have been physically damaged by tornadoes or fires, but not aware, I'm not aware of projects where there's been environmental damage because of the project, because of the solar panels or, yeah, the solar technology. No, I'm not.
I have a question.
All right.
I have a question on the wildlife. Explain it to them again, wildlife. How to maintain it for wildlife? What do, what, what happens?
Every now and then, you're asked a question. You really are delighted to have been asked. Pinegate Renewables is the company that owns this special purpose entity, Plateau Solar. Pinegate, in conjunction with the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, has come up with a type of fencing called wildlife permeable fences that allows most small animals to get through it so that they can get through to where their food supplies are, so they can get through to where their habitat might be, their places where they would mate. The only animals really, there are some, deer cannot go through that, but a deer can jump over this fence. For those that are larger, Pinegate, which is a company that is an innovator in this space, has created and is now starting to add in its facilities wildlife corridors like what you're seeing. These, these types of larger facilities did not used to exist. Previously, they were all five megawatts, 40 or 50 acres. But when Duke took over the program five years ago, four years ago, Duke initiated a process where only, it would only accept facilities that were this size. So Duke Energy is really what has caused this. It's not solar developers. It's Duke Energy. And when we moved to that, Pinegate was the first, and it might really be the only company that is looking at that issue. And they have made tremendous strides to mitigate or eliminate the impact. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you. You okay, Joe?
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Robert, go ahead.
Um, I noticed on the future land use map, and I'm, I'm, you know, it's, it's called the future for a reason, obviously. I still notice that if this were to happen under the future land use map, there would still be a portion of this that would be rural residential AG. Would, if we were to approve this conditional zoning, would that affect the future land use map of how that would be drawn based on that?
So it would not impact the future land use map. North Carolina is one of the states where you can approve a rezoning that doesn't necessarily match with your future land use map, and, and that's not what I'm saying is happening here. But you would have to give a reason as part of the rezoning if you were to go against the future land use map. Say it's called the residential and the rezoning was for a commercial. Then you would have to give justification as to why you were going against your future land use map. I think Angie's staff report, though, and I don't have it right in front of me, Angie might be able to better address, because I think she listed both of those categories in her staff report and that it did meet that. Am I incorrect?
Well, I felt that the rural residential AG, it's defined as a low-density residential, single-site-built and manufactured homes, agriculture, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office or public institutional uses meeting locational criteria. Most of the land within protected water supply watersheds should be placed in this category. Locational criteria for non-residential uses within this land use category would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road. Proximity to similar uses and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. Land uses within this category would be expected to develop without public sewer, private septic tank, with private septic tank systems. And then it's also part of the property is suburban residential. And it's defined in the future land use plan as residential land uses, including subdivisions and manufactured home parks at densities of one to three dwelling units per acre, commercial, office, industrial, public institutional uses meeting locational criteria. Locational criteria for non-residential uses within this land use category would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road. Proximity to similar uses and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. Land uses within this category could develop with or without public sewer. Those are the two, two choices, or this is how the, it is in our, on our map. That's what the land is. This tan is suburban, and then this is the residential. And we're getting a new land use plan.
So, so the question is, knowing that you're getting a new land use plan, a comprehensive land use plan, would this fall under the criteria that that new plan is gonna be about?
When we have the new plan adopted, you will use it as a guiding document for future cases, yes. But right now-
This would not be effective because that hasn't been adopted yet.
Correct. Correct. Right now, you're looking at the one that you have in front of you where the majority of the property is identified as suburban residential and a small portion is rural residential. And based on the descriptions, both allowing non-residential on a major secondary road, which Hurdle Mills Road is, staff felt that it met the future land use map for both of those categories for the project.
All right. Any, any other questions of the board? You're gonna have to come up here, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. Again, name is Paul Lynch. Would it be permissible to ask a question on the environmental impacts of a project like this for one of the applicant's experts? I believe one of the board members asked about environmental concerns.
Sure.
May I?
Sure, I'll ask it. You go ahead, back. What is environmental?
Well, this is very specific.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, man.
Mr. Chairman, I imagine this would be addressed to your civil engineer. Addressing the environmental impacts of a utility-scale solar facility. Have you had any exposure to or any experience with or knowledge of? to or any experience with or knowledge of the microclimate impacts of a facility of this size, specifically what's called the heat island effects? And the temperature, the temperature increase impacts of that mass of metal on the ground, hundreds of pounds? That's my specific question.
Chris, end of the period. On the scale of this seven or eight hundred acres, it will not be any detectable impact. It would be typical of, I've done the heat analysis on it, and it's very, very, very similar to what would happen for us, the heat generated that would be for like pine trees year-round. I mean, it varies according to season scene, but for the whole, it's not as much of a heat sink as a pond or lake. That would be more of a heat sink, and it certainly does not generate heat like asphalt would. It's in between there, and it's very close to what would be a grove of pine trees on a year-round basis. If you, the average amount of heat absorption would be very similar.
All right, thank you, Chris. Okay. Does it satisfy you, Mr. Lynch?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Everybody else, anybody, anybody else have any more questions? Anybody else have any more questions on the board? Go ahead.
Question for planning staff. If this were to end up being approved as a conditional zoning, and knowing that solar systems have an expected end of life, how would that zoning be treated? Is there a certain amount of time in which more panels could potentially be installed? Or is there, would it automatically be the zoning changed when the site was decommissioned, if it were to occur?
So when conditional zoning is approved, and I work with it extensively in a previous jurisdiction, so I'm very familiar with it, it basically becomes its own separate zoning district. And so on the map, it'll have like a little notation, and then in our office, we have to keep on file. So someone says, I need to know about this zoning right here. So we have to keep on file all the conditions, regulations, and stipulations that apply to that specific project. And once it's approved, as long as they act on the project within two years, which I'm assuming they would not let it expire, and they would initiate the plan review and get their project approved and built, then it is approved. It's basically vested. Now, recognizing that solar does have a shelf life, and so 20, 25 years down the road, the new owners want to come in and do a new use, they would have to go back through the process again because that site was approved specifically for that site plan that you're looking at right there. So even if they wanted to come in and do a house or residential, it would have to go back through the public hearing board process, whether they chose to rezone it to do another conditional rezoning, or they could choose to just rezone it back to R or RC. But the only thing that it would be approved for is that site plan that's in front of you, or whatever site plan was subsequently approved by the board.
All right, board members?
Yes. I'm sorry, agricultural is exempt.
Okay, board members, please. Any other questions? I'm ready for a motion. Okay, Anthony, come up here, Anthony. I can't hear you.
Just have one more question from the planning department. Maybe they can answer this question. So the Utilities Commission has, there's been a refile from the utility, for the Utilities Commission, Anthony Horton. So in other words, they made a drastic change to the property. They added the property, then they changed the voltage megawatt. So they have to, they had to repetition to the Utilities Committee and get them to approve the Utilities Commission certificate. Now, my question is, if we, if the Board of Commissioners decides to rezone this land, and the Utilities Commission decides not, decides not to issue that certificate, will all this be for nothing?
That would probably be a better question for the applicant, because I have been here four and a half years, and I've been told, this is at the Utilities Commission, this is at the Utilities Commission. It has never came into our office until two months ago. So I know that they've been working with the Utilities Commission for quite a while now. But whatever approvals they would need from the state, obviously, they would need to garner those approvals. It's my understanding to move forward, or else, it's my understanding, again, that they're not going to get the end user, and so it's kind of a moot point. So if they did get approval from us, and then the Utilities Commission, I can only assume said absolutely no, and again, going back to the other question, they decided not to do this project, you've got a conditional zoning that's now on this property. So you've got to go through that process again to change it.
Why would we even want to go through that process, that the Utilities Commission may even deny this in this structure? Why would we want to even rezone this land? Why would we want to even take that chance?
They also have DEQ approval that they have to obtain. They probably also have to obtain wetland approval. There's a lot of state approvals that they have to obtain other than just the Utilities Commission. So they know that risk. I would hope any developer would know that risk when they're submitting an application, that you have state approvals and you have local approvals, and obviously, you need all of them to proceed forward.
Thank you, and I just hope y'all make the right decision. I hope the Board of Commissioners makes the right decision.
So let me ask Lori this question. So basically, what you said is it would remain as a conditional zone?
Yes, if you've approved it as a conditional zoning.
All right, yes, Sarah?
I got one question for the board.
Lori, did I understand you correct in stating that rezoning the acreage that's currently designated as residential and the designated zoned area of commercial is in keeping with the plan to rezone it rural conservation, special use?
There's not a special use. So what they're requesting is a CDRC. I just want to make it very clear, legislative process, very different. So what they're requesting is to rezone from RRC, and I believe B1, to CDRC. So what our job to do is to look through our comprehensive land use plan and see what they're, if what they're proposing aligns with our comprehensive plan. At staff level, we feel that it does. So staff has made a recommendation of approval. The planning board will also make a recommendation hopefully here shortly. And then, as we all know, the Board of Commissioners would have that final vote.
I didn't hear the total number of acres that we're going to go from residential and commercial to the rural. Can we state that for everybody?
I don't know. Two hundred and forty-four, two hundred and forty-four acres residential going to conditional. Okay, board, I need a motion, please. Do I, what kind of motion? Do we, do we go forward, positive or negative? Is that the two options?
Yeah, when you motion first, I'll hear you, and then-
I don't know.
And then, yes, your motion, you need to approve it, it could be considered with condition, or it could be to deny it. But whichever route you choose, and we'll put that consistency statement back up on the screen.
Just randomly works. We need you to include a consistency statement. So if you were decided to motion to approve, we have an example up there. If you decide to motion to deny, you can tweak that one to suit your denial recommendation. But we do need to make sure that that is included in with the motion. It is required by general statutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I need a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you. Sandra seconded. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, did the board vote on that motion?
All right. Thank you. This is getting late, bro. Motion to second it. All in favor? All the discussion? All in favor say aye? Thank you. Okay, here again, I need a motion, please.
Sandra, I know it's hard to turn and look at the screen, but if you can somehow take the mic with you, so we can make sure we get this clear. Thank you.
Okay, I am making a motion that we deny the conditional district rezoning request. I don't figure out what I'm saying here.
Where's the, where's the?
Yeah, this is for the promotion.
So you would need to tweak that statement to change it into denial. We also would ask for a reason for denial, so when the Board of Commissioners ask, that we can relay that information on to them.
Well, my concern is the community support and the use of the land, the jobs versus the income of the farmers at risk of losing the opportunity to use it as farmland. So I'm looking at it, it's not the best use of the land for Person County.
All right, thank you. motions on the floor. Do I have a second?
I still need that statement. So if you wanted to say the request is not consistent with the Person County land use plan and future planning goals of the county, it is not reasonable and not in the public interest, as you feel it does not meet the goals of the plan.
Okay, the request is not consistent with the Person County land use plan. I'm not going to make a motion that we deny the conditional district rezoning, that the request is not consistent with the best use of the Person County land use for this community at this time, and that is not reasonable for the public interest. Would that go?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I need a second to the motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, Robert seconded. Now, floor is open for discussion of the board, of the vote. Before we vote, any discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, what, I'm not, I've heard all of this stuff tonight. My concern is, is it, I think this is the first conditional zoning district we've had since we've come under this new statute. What I'm concerned about is what happens in the future, because by opening one conditional zoning thing, it opens the door for potential other ones down the road whereby somebody who just decides he or she wants to use his or her property in a certain way can say, well, I can just go get a conditional zoning permit, change the zoning. That's what concerns me most of all, is that are we opening a Pandora's box for condition, for these kinds of requests to come forward? That's really what concerns me, more than the fact that it may or not, may or may not affect the residents in the local Hurdle Mills area, or that this is going to, any kind of environmental impact. I don't think it has any environmental impact personally. That's my concern, is are we opening a Pandora's box for future conditional zoning requests?
So Robert, if I can just add that the state of North Carolina said that every single property owner in Person County has the option to apply for a conditional district rezoning, and it is considered on a case-by-case basis, just kind of like a variance. It is treated, you look at each individual parcel that comes before you, just like every property owner can also apply for general rezoning, which you've had two of them recently. So just know that under state statutes, anyone that owns property in this county can apply for one. You're not creating a new option for them. By state statute, they are allowed to come to our office and fill out an application for one. And it would be considered, if we would look at the comprehensive land use plan for each case, hopefully in the next several months, we'll have a new updated comprehensive land use plan. But you would have to look at each one for each case. So I just want to make that aware, the board aware, that this will always be an option to each property owner in the county.
I understand. My point about that, though, is that this being the first one, you know, it sets a precedent for say, okay, a lot of other folks, even though they do have the right by North Carolina law to do so, would allow them, I think people would start to come forward more than they would have otherwise. That's all the thing I'm getting at.
Of the discussion of the motion on the floor, which is seconded, any other discussion? So are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, Sarah, help me, please. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Lori, oh no, Lori, maybe it's not the microphone. So do you know?
So Sandra made the motion to deny the request based on the community concerns and support, or lack of support for the rezoning, the current use of the land and the farming income that would be reduced. And based on those reasons, she feels that it's not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and she made the motion to deny, is what I have.
Thank you very much. All right, everybody's heard the motion. It's been seconded. Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All in favor or deny the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can we raise hands on that one? Is it a tie? Or two to four? I can't tell.
Motion.
All in favor of the motion to deny, raise your hand.
That's right.
Four.
Four, okay.
Okay.
Tabitha and Kate, okay, two to four.
Thank you.
Got it?
Got it.
All right, folks, that's it. Thank you very much. You know, you know, the next, the next county commissioners' meeting is-
September the seventh. September the seventh, it's a Tuesday, because it's a holiday, please don't show up on Monday. Door should be locked. This case will be heard by the county commissioners on September the seventh. We have to run a legal ad for two consecutive weeks prior to the meeting, so September seventh, Tuesday at 7:00 PM in this room.
Everybody understands, September seventh. Thank you very much.
We still have one item on the agenda? Excuse me, excuse me, we still have a planning board meeting going on? Yes. Board members, the last item on your agenda is other business. That's usually where I give you the update on the previous cases. So really quickly, I do want to update you on the- So really quickly, I do want to update you on the previous re, general rezoning that you had from Mr. Anderson that was out there at the lake, where he was proposing a general rezoning from R.C. to R. At that time, we only had general rezonings. And after the planning board's concern, and I believe it was a unanimous denial, he did withdraw his application, so it never went to the Board of Commissioners. He withdrew it shortly before the meeting. He has said that he might come back with a conditional rezoning, but we have not seen anything submitted.
Any other comments the board needs to make?
After this meeting, I am concerned about the consistency and the statements, because we had a case before this, and I think it was around, you know, jobs, economic and all those things, and we denied it. And then we use economic as a reason for, one of the reasons for denying this request. So I am concerned about consistency when we're thinking about the statements and what we're really thinking about when making these decisions. And then the second part, just making sure that people understand what R.C. really is. Because when you think of rural, everyone automatically, and if you heard the comments, it's like, you know, farming and grass or whatever, not knowing that R.C. is amusement parks and, and all kinds of things that are listed. So it'll be great in the future if, this is when we have these large public hearings, we make it very clear what some of these things really mean. Because I think I exited, like, one of my first meetings, like, what is real, you know, you know, R.C. and it's like, okay, it's everything. And so that's all I want to add at the end of this meeting.
That's a, that's a great discussion. And following up on that, I actually have an agenda item on the Board of Commissioner meeting this Monday, not this, but a separate agenda item where the board has asked for an update on our planning ordinances. And as part of the next budget year, I think I mentioned to y'all that I was asking for a new UDO, basically a new zoning ordinance. And I'm actually asking for that to be moved up, because once our comprehensive plan is adopted, hopefully this fall, it really makes sense to transition right into a new UDO, start working on a new ordinance, because this is nineteen ninety-one. And so that will be a request that I present to the board. I don't know how it will go. It might be that they want to just amend the current ordinance, but that will be a topic of discussion Monday, and I will, I can update the planning board as to how that goes.
How long will that take? If, if, if they approve it, will that take a?
It typically takes, once a consultant is hired, it typically takes about a year. So I'm still hoping optimistically we go that route, because I feel like we've put so many Band-Aids on this ordinance since we've had it, that I feel like we need a fresh start with new ordinance, so.
I agree. I think it would work, but whether they come up with that money to do that, I don't know.
That's true.
Okay, any other comments? Concerns? Need a motion to adjourn, please?
A motion to adjourn.
Sandra seconded. Thank you very much.
Thank you.